...of allegiance.
Thank you. Kate, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Marie McFarland is absent. Josh Brainard.
Present.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Sean Kier is absent, and Patty Crone.
Here.
Any agenda changes or revisions, Lindsay?
None.
Okay, thank you. We have the minutes from the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from May 21st. I assume you've all read them. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes for May 21st.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, out of the way. We have a final, final order resolution, our final recommendation, 2019-02, Places of Worship Accessory Uses.
Move to approve the final recommendation for 2019-02, Places of Worship Accessory Uses.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all approved, or all in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, the final recommendation is approved. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight on APP 2019-01. It is now, depending on which clock I'm looking at, 6:04-ish. The public hearing for file APP 2019-01 is now open. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing for an appeal of an administrative decision. The subject of this hearing is an appeal of an administrative decision of the Planning and Community Development Director approving a geologic hazard report for a proposed single-family residence on a lot located in the coastal erosion zone. The subject property is located at 2461 Southwest Anchor Avenue in the Nelscott neighborhood. The property owner is Lee Hollinger. Do I have that name correct? Okay, and the appellant is Michael Kimbrel. Okay, thank you. The matter at issue for this hearing is a determination of the appropriateness of the Director's decision regarding the requirements of the code as identified by the appellant's notice of appeal. Because quasi-judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural safeguards, the Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this manner? Okay, seeing none.
I should make it aware that I'm a resident of the neighborhood and I'm very familiar with that beach cliff because I walk that beach almost every day.
Okay, do you feel like you have any prejudgment of this, or any conflict of interest?
No.
Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a Commissioner to participate in this matter? Okay, seeing none. Okay, the following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the City Code and ORS 197.763, paragraph 5. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. Lindsay?
The substantive criteria for the decision of approval of the geo-hazard report is identified in the staff report and listed under Lincoln City Municipal Code 1747-020B, which goes on to state that the geological hazard report must include the following information. One, site description, that goes with subsections A through K regarding what's required on that site description. Two, the description of the fronting beach. That has subsections A through G associated with that and can be found on page three of the staff report. Number three is the analysis of erosion and flooding potential and the associated subsections A through I. Number four would be the assessment of potential reactions to erosion episodes with subsections A through C, and five being recommendations with subsections A through D.
Okay. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria that Lindsay just listed, or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining the procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. These preliminary matters and required statements. A staff report, questions of the staff, the appellant's presentation, the applicant's presentation, those in support of the appeal, those opposed, rebuttal by the applicant, rebuttal, or appellant, pardon me, rebuttal by the applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberation, and finally, decision. The city has established some time limits. The applicant, the appellant, I'm sorry, Mr. Kimbrel, will have 15 minutes to speak. After the appellant testifies, the applicant, Mr. Hollinger, will have about 15, or will have 15 minutes to speak. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has any questions for you, your time responding to those questions will not be counted in your time limit. The hearing procedures also allow the chair to limit repetitive testimony. If you wish to speak, please write your name and your mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet that's at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone. Begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy of that to the recorder, who's Kate over here. Okay, staff, would you please present your report? Moving to move to...
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, we are hearing Appeal 2019-01 in regards to real property located at 2461 Southwest Anchor Avenue. The appeal is based upon the Director's decision of approving the geological hazard report, which was issued on April 15th, 2019, for that site. It is the Department's historical practice to issue a notice of decision regarding geological hazard reports. However, the Lincoln City Municipal Code has no requirement for this practice. It is an additional step that the Department takes to provide this notice. The decision of approval was based upon the requirements of Lincoln City Municipal Code 1747-020B, as identified earlier in the proceeding. The matter at issue this evening is the appropriateness of the Director's interpretation of the requirements of this title. This title is referencing specifically Lincoln City Municipal Code 17, zoning. The burden of proof is upon the appellant's in regards to the appropriateness of the interpretation. Your options this evening at Planning Commission are to either affirm, reverse, modify, or remand the Director's decision issued on April 15th, 2019.
Lindsay, may I ask a question? What would be the ramifications of remanding the decision to the planning commission? What does that mean exactly?
If there's additional information that is provided tonight that is specific to 1747-020B that needs to be considered, the Planning Commission could request that the issue be remanded back for additional analysis. The appellant raised three issues on their formal appeal dated April 26th, 2019. Those being the erosion rate, how the construction below grade will not mark an increase in erosion on the adjacent property, and the statement that there was no indication or of location of property lines. The appellant's basis, the code requires that the appellant provide and indicate in what respects the decision being appealed as a discretionary decision involving a land use matter. And their statement in the appellant paperwork is, "As neighbors we worry regarding erosion and collapse of the bank of our adjoining property with the subject property." At this point, staff, staff does not believe that a discretionary decision was made with this decision as we went through the code of 1747-020B to identify that the geotechnical hazard report had been complete and included all of the information required under the zoning title for this report. It is not the Planning Director's decision to analyze the scientific basis of the report as that is done through Title 15 with Building Code when they review the actual proposals for construction. Staff provide, did provide the Commission with detailed information on where to find the required information identified of 1747-020B in the staff report provided this evening. You can find that information beginning on page three of the staff report under Analysis. As I've provided for ease of the public as well as the Commission, I've identified specifically what pages of the geo-hazard report identify the required information of the site description, description of fronting beach, analysis of erosion, flooding potential, as well as assessment of potential reactions to the erosion episodes and the recommendations. Let's see here. In addition to public testimony that you will hear this evening, we did receive two written comments. Additional information from the appellant to be considered, as well as a public comment from neighboring property in the, in the neighborhood as well. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing, weigh the evidence provided in the report and exhibits after, consider deliberation. After deliberation, the Planning Commission to decide whether to affirm, reverse, or modify the decision or remand it to the Director with instructions. The exhibits to the staff report include the determination, the notice of appeal, the geotechnical report and supplemental information provided, as well as the site plan, building permit submittal, and the site survey was included in the packet as well. That concludes staff report at this time. If you have any questions?
Commission have questions for staff? Steve?
Can we ask you questions about the report? Questions pertaining to the report?
The, the appeal is specific on whether the report contains the information required. I do not have the education or professional background that a geotechnical engineer would have.
Can I ask a question, and you can determine if it's appropriate or not?
Sure, sure.
May a property owner remove eight to 10 feet of the bluff in a coastal erosion zone? Is that a legal thing to do?
Yes, so it is part of, well, that is specific to the Building Code of Title 15 as far as how that can be addressed. There are, what is the word I'm looking for? There's mitigation measures that can be utilized in order to be able to do this. There are additional properties along Lincoln City that have allowed that. Most recently, an example would be the Starfish Manors remodel and revision where they did remove some bluff to bring down and, and be able to build those. So it is an allowed practice within the city.
Another question. Is a setback requirement from, measured from the base of the property, which might be down by the beach, or the western edge of the bluff?
The setbacks requirements on bluffs, it does require it to be measured from the edge of the bluff.
And in some of the, the letter that was received by the person who lives in Colorado raised an issue asking, is a city reviewing the LUBA case that pertained to this property, I think many years ago, to determine if the proposed development is similar? And also asks, have there been changes in the regulations since then that would permit this type of development, or deny it?
We have not reviewed the LUBA cases. That was an appeal based upon the issuance of a building permit. No building permit has been issued for this site. Our building official is still requesting additional information in advance of issuing that.
That LUBA case was under a prior code.
And under, yes, yeah.
And then one last question. Do the city current regulations allow a home to be cantilevered over the edge of the bank or the bluff?
Yes, so as long as, the code currently requires that footings be set back from that seven, in this case, a 17-foot setback from the edge of bluff. However, cantilevering designed for decks or other appetances of the structure are allowed.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioners? Hearing? This time? Okay. We are ready for the appellant's presentation. Yes, please. If you can pull the microphone toward you and speak directly into it and just give us your name before you start, please.
My name is Michael Kimbrel. I own the property adjacent to, they're trying to build a lot. It's an empty lot and a house across the street. I first, Lee, was, my first indication something was going on with the place is construction guys parking on my property and and my pickup. And so I figured something was going on and somebody started painting X's on things and stuff. So then I finally get a notice from you guys that this is going on. I'd been aware of this property for a long time. I'd been, that had been denied to build ability and that's why it was so cheap. As it was sold for like a hundred thousand dollars or something in that area, which doesn't seem like lakefront or oceanfront property, so. And I had looked at it and thought that was probably appropriate price for it. Anyway, I bought, I bought our house about three or four years ago and we're working on it. And again, was dismayed to hear that they were going ahead and trying to build on this property. And it becomes clear to me that the, in this GEO report, and I've had a little history of working with ge, geological problems, that their interpretation that they'd have no effect on my property is really quite ridiculous. Particularly in light of the amount of deterioration of that bank. Their description of the bank is very poor. The degrees of angle are, are not appropriate. And it's really hard for me to understand how they can dig down 20 feet and add distance to their property saying that they're, that they've moved out, that suddenly the, the bank is several feet beyond where it really is. And those kind of things I don't understand well at all. Yeah, I didn't have time to think about it very much because I literally found out about this within five to seven days from the time I was given. And then when we come to the city to see what was going on and to try to get records of it and we asked for copies of these things and they wouldn't give them to us. And I said, we had to stand there and we could look at the, the material, but we couldn't take pictures or copies of it. And apparently that's not really the case and we later received all the copies and stuff we did, but that's just been within the last week. So instead of taking a lot of time with this, I think the things that I want to point out is, one, I think that the geologic study which was done years ago and the guy just came back and walked through it on April 1st. There's all kinds of obvious errors in it. They're talking about beach access being a mile down the road and one, you know, several thousand feet the other direction. Well, there's all kinds of beach accesses and factors, one, directly adjacent to the property that's trying to be built on. And it's my understanding that those things cause additional erosion when they're put in. And indeed, there was a beach access on my property at one time which is gone. There's a few posts left, but that's all broken away. So the kind of things that, that concern me about this is that I think what's going to happen is my property is going to fall into the ocean. And it will take the city property directly to the north with it, where the road is within 10 feet of the edges of bluff or maybe a little farther, but it's very, very close. No one's ever said anything about that. And all the property that are, that's been built to the north of my place is got a setback of 30, 40 feet. I don't know, but it's way back away from the, the bank and I don't know why that is other than that whole bank looks like it's going to go. So anyway, what I would like is I'd like to have a holdup on this. I, I think I'm willing to spend the money to have a GEO report done on my own property and to see if they would agree that this kind of excavation would cause no, have no effect on my property. It's already ready to fall off. And I think that, and I was really forced into making this appellate, or whatever this is called, because I've never done anything like this before, but to figure out what was going on. And I do feel that may well harm my property, my property value, and particularly the bank is very unstable, much more so than I think, that I think and that those guys that okayed it, I don't know, you know? So I was just at the corner of Anchor Court in Anchor and there's a sign that says, and you have to kind of dig it out. And it's about four or five feet off the road. The bank drops off and it says, this is a hazard and you can't go on there and it's dangerous as heck and it's going to fall in. And at the bottom of that cliff is the remains of somebody's foundation. And I'm sure you walk by it every day and see that sign that's kind of covered up. But anyway, so that's my concerns about this. I don't want to bother you more with this, but I would, would like to be able to get somebody out there to look at it. Somebody talked to me about this when they were doing this months ago. They were up to this three years ago, then in January, and no one ever says anything to them. Or even if the guy come and talk to me and said, hey, I want to build on there. You got any concerns about this? But none of that. I just get a bunch of builders parking on my property and it's a little rude. And so we end up like this. So that's where I'm coming from. I think the GEO report is in error. There's many things about it that just don't make sense. And particularly with the amount of excavation and stuff, I just think there's, there's a very big risk of damaging my property as well as city property. I mean, if you look at that, that cliff, and I've got pictures of it, but there's really not time to do it. It's ready to go. And all the places up there built just north of me, perhaps a 50, 60-foot distance between their, their footings and the the bluff, so that's, that's it. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. I would like to, I don't know how to do that, but I'm willing to spend the money and the time to make sure that this is not going to damage my property because I've, I have a significant investment in it. And I would hope that I would be given time to do that. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Kimbrel. I noticed that your property has what looks like a asphalt parking strip on it. Is that the piece of property that's yours?
No, it's just gravel.
Okay, okay, like curb area though, and are you living in the house across the street from that? Okay, so your concern is the, mainly the piece of property that would be on the ocean side of the road?
It's going to fall in.
Fall off.
If one looks at pictures and it's obvious, if you look at the few pictures I've got to see that, and they said there's, since the 60s and, you know, this takes a long time to figure out. There's been 20 feet or 18 feet or something of drop-off since then. And, you know, another 20 feet here at the road, so that's all going to go in. It's just a matter of when. And I think this kind of activity is going to make it go a lot faster. And, you know, they say, well, there's these things at the bottom of the bluff that are preventing that, undermining. They're not. There's big chunks of that's falling off all the time. And I don't think anybody's even bothered to look at that or even the piece of property or the city's property north of there. And as far as property lines, the reason I have questions about that is my property lines are all screwed up. I had no idea what I bought based on when you look at it, you look at the road, you look at your hedges and you think, well, that's my property. Well, it wasn't. Property line is like 10 or 15 feet away from the road into the, into my property. In fact, includes the steps to go in the house. So it makes you a little suspicious about, you know, where exactly are these property lines and stuff, so much so that I had my survey done to see exactly where mine are on the house. I didn't have it on the property across the street. So that's where I'm coming from. And I need time to be able to, you know, investigate this, get my own GEO report. I don't care what it costs. I'm into this a lot already, so that's it.
So your, your property that's adjacent to this property does not have a structure on it currently, right?
No, never will.
Never will. So you never intended to build anything on that property?
I wouldn't think so, but I mean, if, if they can get away with building on theirs, I mean, maybe I'll get a GEO report. I just don't believe it makes sense to build on any of those properties. The, if you go up there to the edge of the property and look over the edge, which people do all the time, which surprises me if somebody hasn't fell, is that it is straight down. Scary.
Other questions?
Your property is to the north?
North, yeah. Yeah, it's a big lot north of it. A lot of us there, you know? I mean, it's just supposed to be, I don't know, 100 feet or something and there's no 100 feet there. It stops at probably 30 feet or something. And it's getting closer all the time that no one's looked underneath that vegetation, but vegetation is undermined and it's just all curled over and it's going to pop, you know?
Is there a seawall at the bottom of your?
There's a seawall down at the bottom, and I don't know why they put that there. I expect because the whole thing was sliding before and they thought that that would mitigate any ocean activity and stuff. But you know, this is all new to me. I mean, I grew up in North Dakota. This coastal stuff is crazy, you know?
Is there any seawall north of your property?
I don't think it extends north of it, but I mean, I'd have to look at the pictures. But somebody's put a seawall, apparently in the 80s or something. And like I said, there had been an access to the beach there that's gone, you know, that's fell in and stuff. And there is one right next door to the property, it's subject property, in which that GEO reports acts like there isn't a beach access between Dee River and the one for Olivia Beach, you know? And there's a bunch of them. So I don't know how thoroughly we're in looking at that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kimbrel? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Applicant, your turn.
Good evening. My name is Chris Minor. I'm an attorney. I live down in Newport and have an office down there. And I've been assisting with the original purchase of this lot. And Mr. Hollinger asked me to appear at the hearing. And I'll just try and make a brief introduction. The real player in this is Doug Glass from Schlicker and Associates. I have known Mr. Glass for a long time. Probably 40 or 50 years ago, I knew Herb Schlicker, who was the founder of the firm. And he's long gone. But then and now, those people are the preeminent geotechnicians on the coast. To suggest that he walked by on April 1st and took a quick look at it is not accurate. And he, he will talk, and I'm not going to try and get into it very much. One thing that I would like to point out is that although Mr. Kimbrel indicates that his lot is not buildable and that nobody else should be allowed to build on the property, which is now owned by Mr. Hollinger, I notice in his letter of May 28, 2019, the first question in his letter is, will it make my lot unbuildable? Thus robbing me of value of my property. Now, if he doesn't think that area is buildable, what was the nature of that question? What, what was the purpose in asking that? But anyway, I just want to make a quick note to the effect that your planning department representative did an excellent job of identifying the issues. This is not a time to review the geologic report, or to review the building permit, or to review the architectural plans. The ordinance and section 17.47.020B makes it very clear that the purpose of the review is to determine whether or not the planning commission was correct when they said that the geologic report complies with the requirements of the ordinance. And as Ms. Schmelt indicated, there's a list of things that the report has to address. And those are addressed. And I can assure you that Mr. Glass has done it very, very well. And I'm going to shut up now. I'd like to give you a copy of my notes on the, on the scope of the hearing issues. And I think we want to let Mr. Glass go ahead and speak. And at, at the end of that, if we have some time left, Mr. Hollinger's here. He would like to just make a couple of comments. While we feel that the scope of the hearing is really in fact limited, I'm sure that Mr. Hollinger and Mr. Glass would be more than happy to answer questions that might help set everybody's mind at ease about what's going to come in the future. But the actual issues before us at this point are fairly limited. And if I may approach, I'll, I'll just pass some of these out. Mr. Glass, you go ahead.
Before he walks away, can I ask him a question, a specific question?
Absolute chair.
What my question is, is I'm not sure if this is the right place to do it, but I guess the question would be, is if Mr. Kimbrel's assumptions are anywhere near correct and as you guys are cutting away the property, it slides and takes his property with it, are you guys going to be? Is there a liability issue to your work?
If someone?
Reden, identify him for his loss?
If someone caused that to occur, there, there would be liability. There's a, there's a duty not to remove lateral support under Oregon law. And if you, if you take away somebody's lateral support and their property moves or is destroyed because of it, you've got to cover their damages.
So okay, I just, so you are aware that is a possibility? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sure.
Is there anything in the code that says when you present a geologic report for approval, it has to be completed within a certain period of time that you request it to be approved? Because this report was completed in 2015, correct? So is that?
Mr. Glass can address that. I don't know what the code requirements are. Go ahead. You probably know the answer.
And I may look at Kate as well, but a geotechnical report does need to be completed and/or updated within one year of construction. And I'm looking here at the code right now. Kate?
It says if it's more than a year old, it has to be updated.
Yes.
So it would be updated again if it's?
Yeah. The geologist must submit the review to the city as a written report that if written or last updated more than a year prior to the first building inspection, must be updated to reflect current conditions. And they did provide supplemental information to update and reanalyze based upon that information. It should be in your packet.
Ready for Mr. Glass?
Yes.
He's the guy who has the answer.
Hello, thank you for hearing me this evening. My name is Doug Glass. I am the principal engineering geologist with H.G. Schlicker and Associates. We've been in business about 40 years. I've completed about 2,000 coastal projects. And I'm here to answer your questions tonight. I can do it that way. I can address the appellant's concerns bullet by bullet, or any other way that you'd like me to do this.
Well, as much as I would love to just dive into the geology of it, I don't think that's really what we're, we're here for. Showing my own personal interest. I, I think if you want to address the appellant's concerns point by point, that might be the most advantageous thing to do at this point. I don't want to get into a point by point in your report because I don't think that that is our role here.
Okay, let me just start with Mr. Kimbrel's letter. Item one was about the survey. There's a little confusion because of the different elevations shown in different surveys. That's because there are a number of different reference elevations. One of them being NGB 29, another one being NAVD 88. And then there is oftentimes just a point reference where you go out and assume an elevation on site. And the topographic map that's used in the report was an assumed elevation provided by surveyors. Item number two, the, the report doesn't address that the top eight to 10 feet of the bluff is proposed to be permanently removed at the site. The reason our, our reports don't typically address that is we write these reports prior to a set of development plans being prepared. And so that's why after the plans are prepared, we ask that they run them back through us so that we can review and approve the plans and, and see if they're actually in conformance with the recommendations in our report. And they did that on a number of times. The setback of the report says 15 feet there, and it should be 17 feet based on the .2 feet per year. They're absolutely right. That's a typo. It's 17 feet. All the plans that have been submitted to us show a minimum setback for foundations of 17 feet. The removal of the top of the bluff also moves the setback about eight feet closer to the existing bluff. What happens is as you remove the bluff and you go down, because it's a sloping site, the edge of the bluff actually moves towards the west, moves seaward. So you actually are buying ground. The other thing that that is getting you is it's reducing the instability of the site because you're unloading the head of the slope. And it's the weight that is the primary driver in landsliding and slope instability. So removing that weight is a good thing. Doesn't have to be done, but if it's done, it's, it's a good thing.
Quick question on that point. When you do that though, do, do you not create an issue with the, the next boundary line? Because now the, the land that was there supporting it has been moved away?
Yes, so you do have to provide support. So you do that through walls, concrete, and that's the way, or sometimes it's a, a rockery wall is common. And so that's what's been proposed at the site is retention of the slope. Number five, the whole of your site plans show about eight feet of the house and a footing within the 17-foot setback. There's nothing within the 17-foot setback. There is no foundation support within that. There are parts of the structure that are cantilevered out, but there is no foundation support within that 17 feet. That's very typical, that you cantilever out beyond the setback line. There are, number six, steel beams are located above the basement. Yes, they are, and they're cantilevered into that setback area. The slopes, it gets back to your question. The slopes are, are being retained by retaining walls. This is a, and if you haven't looked at the plans for the actual home itself, there are actually augured piers into the ground. You drop a white flange beam or what you would consider a pile, steel H pile in there, filled with concrete. And that acts as a support for the walls. And the walls support the, the earth that you've removed. So that's how you, you keep everything standing. Report says, related to drainage, the report says that roof and footing drains should discharge to the storm sewer. If they could, that's where you should drain them. If you can't, you take them to the base of the slope. And you've seen that throughout many areas in Lincoln City. So it's just, you, you pipe it down to the bottom. Item nine, the only means of emergency egress from the basement bedrooms is on the west side and are located in the erosion setback area. Yeah, that, I'm, I'm not really sure what they're trying to get at there, but basements are common in homes and, and exits from those basements are, are to the nearest staircase typically. What added provision may be needed to handle surface water draining into or falling in the low area, meaning the basement area? Basically, the stormwater is captured by the impermeable surface and directed to discharge location. I would imagine the discharge location for everything in the basement will either be a sump pump and pumped up, or they'll just straight discharge it in a pipe down the bluff. Streams and drainage, this section does not mention the streams creeks at about 11th Street and 34th Street. They're, they're not important to the site development, which is why they're not discussed in the report.
Is there a seep at the base of the slope of this particular?
Yeah, there are seeps clear along Lincoln City, virtually everywhere. It depends on whether you see them or not, usually depends mostly on whether they're covered in sand, that particular year or not. As you've noticed, the beach elevation is very dramatically. Beach access pathways, they're really trying to get it public access. And the public, the nearest public access is the, the staircase of Olivia Beach, which was our project, by the way. Those are the, the, what Becky Morfitt provided us. And Mr. Kimbrel's appeal, I think is really, his main concern seems to be the potential for disturbance of his lot. And I think he needs to understand that the excavation on this lot affects this lot. And unfortunately for him, you know, this lot's going to get supported. And his lot is going to continue to erode. There's nothing that we can do to prevent erosion on his, on his parcel. But it won't be eroding from the sides as a result of the excavation. It'll be the same erosion that he's been experiencing for decades. And the reality is that erosion in that area has slowed dramatically.
That's what?
Has slowed dramatically, yeah. We, if you look at the, in our report, you can see some photos that occupy kind of the same area, shooting up at the bluff. And you'll see there's a lot more vegetation there today than there was 20 years ago.
Well, I?
But Kimbrel's lot, Kimbrel's lot is still eroding.
I mean, between the Olivia Beach steps and the bluff that's directly north of your property, or your property, I think about three years ago, could have been four, but since the 2015 report was submitted or prepared, there have been two major landslides on that bluff.
There have.
Dumping tons of material onto the beach, much of which is washed away since the landslides occurred. But that's a very, as they say, it's a coastal erosion zone. It's happening. It's happening.
Absolutely happens, and that's the purpose of the setbacks, is to buy time. And that's all they do. They buy time.
Sorry, what buys time?
Having the, having the erosion setbacks, the building setback. It buys people time. It doesn't, it doesn't prevent the erosion. So the purpose of that setback is to buy a certain life for a structure. In this case, it's 60 years. That's the way the rules are written. And you know, Lincoln City luckily has some kind of timeframe. Many, in many jurisdictions, they don't have a timeframe at all.
So when you're, when you're doing a, a geotech survey prior to building design, do you contemplate, or how do you contemplate potential impacts on adjacent property? Or do you wait until you see the property building design to look at things like drainage issues or something that may affect an adjacent property?
Usually we can anticipate what's going to take place. We've been doing enough of this that we can see that, hey, these are, these are what you're, this is what you're doing. You're putting a structure in, you're, as a result of that impermeable surface, you're generating stormwater runoff.
You're loading it?
Yeah, you need, you need to capture it and you need to handle it, rather than just, you know, discharge it on your neighbor's property. It needs to be dealt with properly. And that's part of the plan process, the, the site development plan process is to determine where, what you're going to do with that water.
You, you've done a lot of work in Lincoln City?
Yeah.
Right? Is it your experience that when you do review a, a building plan and provide recommendations? You, you provided some pretty specific recommendations for changes to their, to their peer design, to their retaining wall design. Are those implemented? Are those implemented by the builder? Are they required? Does the city, does Lincoln City require those recommendations to be adopted?
We do, yes.
What typically takes place is they develop a, a plan set. They send it through us for a review. We look at it and go, no, that doesn't quite follow what we recommended. That's not quite exactly what we recommended. You need to work on these two things, or these three things, or these 10 things, depending on the, the site. And we send it back to the designers. And that usually includes the actual designer or architect, and oftentimes the structural engineer that worked on the project.
And then are you working in concert with the, with the building inspector and code enforcement?
Well, what we do is once the plans are in conformance with our recommendations, we write a letter of approval that says, hey, these plans are in conformance. And then we give that to our client, and our client most typically get, sends that on to the building departments.
Okay.
Planning and building department, I should say.
And then does that, does that, do you have liability associated with that approval?
In my world, there's liability.
Yeah, you're signing off on them, basically.
And yes, we're signing off on it because we're signing that letter, and we're stamping that letter that says, yeah, they're in conformance. And then during construction, we go out and do construction observations. So on a project like this, we'll be doing more than typical because there's deep foundations involved, and we need to be out there during construction of deep foundations. On a typical shallow foundation home site, we would go out and look at the foundation excavation and, you know, make sure the setback's correct, and make sure that they're down to good materials to start founding their building on, and that would be the last thing we would do.
There was some question in the comment letters regarding the house plan. Is this a new plan or an old plan?
It's a new plan, ma'am.
It's a new plan.
My name's Lee Hollinger for the record.
You're the guy. Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Hi, I have one.
Yep.
Is it, does Oregon State law allow more additional shoreline protection down on the beachside? So for example, if your property did not have that bank there, would Oregon State law allow you to put in riprap or build up that wall?
So in Oregon, in order to get oceanfront protective structure in, you have to have been developed on January one of nineteen seventy-seven. And developed means a platted subdivision lot, roads and utilities available. And you must have a structure that's in danger. It's being threatened. So, so this site got a wall in before it met some of that criteria.
Now, could that, could that wall be expanded now legally or not?
Uh, when you want to go in and do a change of that kind to a wall, you have to go back through the permitting process, because the only thing the state can do, OPRDs can control that permit, by the way, the only thing that they can do is give you a repair permit for in-kind structure. So if you decide to make something larger, that's not in-kind, and you need to go back through the process typically.
So if you're, you lost your wall, you could rebuild it to the same height.
Yeah, you could bring, rebuild the same standard under repair agreement. But at that point, OPRD usually, if they're seeing something being damaged, they're usually saying, hey, let's talk about doing an improvement to that. Because they don't want to see concrete on the beach.
So from the base, the current wall is about four feet high?
Yeah, the current wall is very short.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's done, it's done a great job, because all it's doing is getting that last wave run-up. As, you know, I don't know if you've seen the photos in the report, but there's, oftentimes there's rock exposed on the beach right through that area. And so you're just getting the last bit of the wave run-up there.
So it's protection from undercutting.
It's, yeah, it's amazing what it does, when you consider that it's such a small wall.
Any other questions for the applicant? It's not, no, you, there is an opportunity for testimony in support of the appeal, but this is, there's commissioners' questions.
There is a rebuttal opportunity for both parties.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so hold on, Mr. Kimbrel, you got a chance to rebut. But first, we have any testimony in support of the appeal. And just to remind everybody, in support of the appeal means that you would be testifying, believing the planning director's decision was incorrect and should be overturned or modified. Anyone in the audience? I have a list of folks here.
I didn't get it to break out.
To put your name on the list? And, but you want to support the appeal?
I have.
The names I have on the list, besides the applicant, is Doug Glenn, Chris Minor, who is your attorney, correct?
Douglas.
Yeah, those are you guys, okay. Not sure, I can't really read the next one. And Kathleen, Catherine Magar, Megan?
Yeah.
Is that you? Okay. Are you in support of the appeal?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to let you speak. You can come forward and speak first, and then you who were late can speak next, all right? You have five minutes? Three minutes? Three minutes.
Well, I was just saying.
Wait till you get to the microphone, and then state your name only, and then go ahead.
Okay, I'm Catherine Magar. I live with Michael Kimbrel, and I support his appeal. That's about the long and short of it. I thought he made a pretty good little statement. You know, it's a concern, of course, to anyone living along the beach like that, as to what will happen in the future. So we had to make a quick decision, and we just needed clarification as to what's going on. And it would be nice if everyone could resolve it in a happy manner. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name's Lauren Leach, and I've lived in Lincoln City for about twenty-plus years now. And I'm also a real estate agent here in town. And when I first came to work in Lincoln City in nineteen ninety-eight, I was Pete Anderson, Pete Anderson Real Estate here, and one of the other agents I worked with had lived here forever. And we were talking one day about the beach erosion here, and he literally drives me over to the Nell Scott area at Anchor, at the intersection of Anchor and Anchor Court. And we look over the edge, and this is where the house used to be. And you can still see the remains at the bottom of the, on the beach. And that's only like three tenths of a mile south of the property that's up for debate here. I don't think anything has improved. I mean, it's still going to continue eroding. And I'm sure somewhere in the back of the local newspaper, there's probably an article showing Linda's house washed over into the ocean. It's, I'm sure it could probably be dug up really quick, like, and found when it actually did go over the bank. Like I said, the remain, the bones of the property are still on the ground below it. And I did clock it off this afternoon, from that location to the Kimbrels, three tenths of a mile just north of their place, or south of their place. I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Okay, thank you. Any other testimony in support? Okay, testimony in opposition to the appeal. You're going to get a chance, just a moment. Is, are you, are you going to do a rebuttal, or are you going to make a?
I'm going to make a statement if I had a couple minutes.
Testimony in opposition.
Okay.
That's, you can do that.
Okay, do it.
Opposing there.
Go ahead.
More to the field. Hi, again, my name's Lee Hollinger, and I'm the owner of the subject tax lot we're talking about, tax lot number nineteen hundred. Appreciate your time this evening, and the interest, and the good debate. And I'm the applicant for the building permit, and I'm excited about building a gorgeous home in this tax lot. When I mention about a home to be built, it's exactly that. It's going to be my home. I'm going to live out seven days a week. I'll be a permanent resident here. And all my, all the houses around me are either rentals or vacation beach homes. I'm going to be a permanent resident here, seven days a week. We've heard tonight about erosion concerns. As Mr. Kimbrel mentioned, I had those same concerns five years ago when I went to this lot. So I hired the best geotech engineer in the state, Mr. Douglas. Is this safe? I don't want to build something that's going to be sliding down the hill. We spent a year on that project. It was five years ago. And I came, had one of the best days ever, five years ago, in this very building, down the hallway, when I brought a Lincoln City builder with me, and we went to the planning and development counter, and did some research on this lot, and looked at the history of that. I saw that Douglas had a geotech report on this years and years ago, so I definitely want to retain him, because he knows a lot better than anybody in this room, anybody in the state, really. And I asked the staff members, if we design a house that can fit on this lot, that's within code restrictions, requirements of city Lincoln County, city Lincoln City, would you approve a building permit? They said absolutely. I said, even though my neighbors on the east side of the street are going to lose part of their ocean view, would you approve that? They said absolutely. So I said, that was five years ago. Five years ago, here we are. And I want to submit some photographs. The real reason why we're here is not erosion, it's not the landslide off the side of the, the bluff sliding down the hill, it's about one thing, it's called ocean view. This photograph right here is tax lot nineteen hundred. This is my vehicle sitting where the house will sit. That's the subject lot we're talking about. And I'll submit this if I can when this is over. And then if you, at the, at the front of this vehicle is the bluff edge, let me show you what it looks like at the bluff edge. And you see this probably every day, sir.
Is that where the path ends?
Yes, that's the path.
I've walked out there.
Yep. So this is the view looking to the south, standing on that bluff edge. And this is the view looking to the southeast, it's a panoramic view, it's like the southwest, I'm sorry, southwest. This is the northwest. And this is the north, looking to the north. This is the most beautiful, in my opinion, I'm very biased about it, most beautiful land, most beautiful view in the Pacific Northwest, in my opinion. And I was going to suggest that the real reason, this is the real reason that losing part of this ocean view is why we're here tonight. And it's unfortunate, and I don't blame the folks for not wanting to lose that view. I'd probably feel the same way if I lived on the east side of the street. But this house is going to not impact either one of their lots, their houses. And the tax lot that Mr. Kimbrel has, he doesn't have a C. Well, I own that property, the lot, the eight point five acres to the west of the, his, his lot goes down, and I'll use that for the rebuttal.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
May I approach the bench and?
Well, we're not judges, but I think if you want to give those pictures to Kate.
I'd like to make a question to him, that he did, I can, right? Am I allowed to or not?
For the rebuttal, I think, this is just statements.
I want to talk to him, not.
That's okay. This is just statements in support of our against.
He's not leaving the room.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other in support? Okay. Others, including any testimony from representatives of public agencies? You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, it's the only time I can think I can ask.
Sure, go ahead.
The code says that the bluff setback is determined, it says, "The bluff for this purpose shall be determined by the city through inspection of aerial photos, the most recent LiDAR data, and the dividing line between the active and the high-risk erosion zones identified in the two thousand and four priest maps referenced above." And then it says, "If the planning director cannot determine the location of a bluff, a geotechnical analysis provided at the applicant's expense shall determine the appropriate site for the structure if one exists." So the question is actually for the planning director. If the planning director determined, under these criterion, that, you know, the LiDAR data and the high-risk erosion zone dividing line, where the bluff is, or whether or not the planning director didn't determine the location of the bluff and then deferred to the geotech.
I did not determine the location of the bluff due to the vegetation that's on site. I did do a site visit before issuing my decision. It is very densely vegetated at the top right now. And so I did lean, I did utilize the geotechnical analysis at the owner's expense.
That was my question.
Okay. Okay, rebuttal by the applicant, or by the appellant, if any. Come on up. You can ask your question, and you can make a statement, and you have another five minutes.
Okay, well, I think the first thing is, I had a very short notice on trying to get something together with this, and I should have brought a lawyer and whatever. But I, in a matter of a couple of weeks, there's no way you can do that. And so I think in order for me to be able to defend my property, then I need to get a geo report on mine, because I don't mind paying for it. And I think they'll find that my property, as well as the property to the north, which belongs to the city, is ready to fall in. And it will fall in, and if they keep banging around and driving trucks up down that stretch of road, because the whole house vibrates. And so I think that's the point. The other point I wanted to question these guys about, and I don't care how long they've been on the coast and doing this, maybe they did that house that fell in down the street, I don't know. But when they, they do an arbitrary decision about the amount of erosion, a difference between the subject property and my property, which is three feet apart or the same essentially, is much different, it makes a big difference on their setbacks and stuff. They say, well, mines, my property is eroding a lot, but their property isn't eroding at all. That's kind of interesting. I mean, it's just right next door. The whole bluff, that whole part of town is sagging, and all the places are riprapping and putting walls up and stuff. And to continue to build new properties along there doesn't make sense. And if you want to squeeze them in, or whatever you want, I think the guy got talked into building on that property, or buying that property at a much discount by your geo guys. And otherwise, he probably wouldn't have bought it. And so that's, that's the real question. And I think, I don't know how they determine the setbacks, how they determine that it's not eroding more now than it was twenty years ago, because there's more grass or stuff up there, or whatever, you know? I just think that's ridiculous. But anyway, they went to school, and I haven't, at least that kind of school. And I would want to have the ability to rebut all of their findings by an appropriate geo, whatever they call them. And I'll spend the time and money to do it. And so that's why I think we ought to hold it up until I get a chance to do that. Now, he wants you to feel sorry for him because he took a big risk. I'm sorry for that. You know, I could have taken that risk on that place. I could have bought it, and I looked at it, and I said, this doesn't make sense. And so I didn't buy it. Well, he got someone to convince them that they could build on that. And, you know, maybe they'll get away with it. But I don't think it's a good idea. And I don't think people that live in the neighborhood think it's a good idea. And I don't think the city is going to think it's a good idea when their road falls into the beach. Because that section of road, that piece of property directly north of mine, is about that wide, and it's ready to go. And if my, my, my piece of property is like a graham cracker, it's been lifted up like this, there are four or five-foot drops on either side, and it will snap off like a graham cracker, and it will take the rest of it shortly thereafter. And those guys didn't even look at it. They don't know what the elevations are on the ends of my property. It drops straight down into holes, and it's where the water's running off, I'm sure. There's no other reason. You know, you step off, and you just drop down, and then you're over the bank. So anyway, that's all I've got to say. I would like to have the opportunity to, to, because I'm surely not prepared for this. And I need to get a geo, or bring a lawyer, or whatever. Apparently, I need one. And I'm already into it, you know? I got, I got a week's time to make a decision about whether to fight this or not. And so we'll do it. And I guess the game's on, unless you guys approve it. And then we'll, the future will show what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Well, probably we have a question for you here, the next thing on the script, if you.
Yeah, we have another rebuttal. Thank you, sir. Yep. Rebuttal by the applicant.
Hi, Lee Hollinger again. I just wanted to make sure I took your question, Mr. Cunningham, that you had for me.
Well, yes, you answered.
You answered part of what it was when you said that you intend on living in this house. The other thing that, it quasi bothers me is, is that when you build a house on the coast like this, that you, you think in a 60-year timeline. And I, and I, you know, if that's the rules, that's the rules. I think of a house as a forever structure that stays there. And, you know, it takes like a forest buyer or something to burn it down because it stays there. But on the coast, I understand that we're building on a 60-year timeline, and, and that's what the requirements are, and, and they're established. And so the engineers say that in, in a 60-year timeline, this thing's going to stay in place. You saying that you're going to buy it to occupy it made a lot of difference to me because it says I'm not going to build it to sell it to some idiot that comes down the And I hope that's truthful, what you told me.
Yes, sir.
And I, I looked at your pictures, and I can see why it'd be appealing.
It's, it's the most beautiful view in the Pacific Northwest, and I am going to be living there seven days a week, absolutely. Thank you for the question. And I think one thing related to that, I was so excited when, when Mr. Glass did the first geotech engineering report on this, he was shocked how little it had eroded since the last one, the report. So I was giving more comfort, confidence, that sea wall is making a difference. And, and that particular lot is not eroding, so it may be much longer than 60 years, hopefully. But I'm optimistic as though.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else?
Well, just a couple of things. One, I, I can understand the desire. The appellant came here, he wasn't prepared with expert witnesses or testimony that supports his position. But as with all things, they have to move on. You have to, you have to keep things going. And you only get one bite of the apple. There's a hearing, this was the time to present evidence. You can't really say, well, let's, let's put it off. And when he gets around to it, he can, he can hire somebody to come in and we'll have the hearing over again. It's just, it's not fair to an applicant. And I don't really know. Mr. Appicello might be able to tell us. But I think there's also some time limits for arriving at a decision in some of these matters.
Well, that's an interesting segue. We can go there right now if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A states that, "Upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence."
I'm aware of that rule, and I don't dispute it. I mean, if you wanted to suspend, suspend the final decision for seven days or 10 days, that would be reasonable. But I think there's also a 120-day time limit on certain land use decisions. And I haven't addressed the issue of whether that applies to this particular type of decision. But I will point out that the notice of appeal was filed in April, and we're now into June. It's not as though there was no opportunity to prepare for the hearing.
Sure.
And I'm sympathetic to the appellant's position. I, I sit in a house where there's one house in front of me, and someday, there's going to be another one and another one. And I'm not going to like that. And that's just the way it is. But there is no evidence that the report itself doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance. And given that, the question at this point is, does the report meet the requirements? And if it does, and it does, that kind of settles the issue. The question of whether or not all of the conclusions by the expert are correct doesn't come up under, under the ordinance provisions that I can see. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Glass again. I'd just like to address the generalizations made about the stability of the bluffs, particularly the three-tenths of a mile. There's been another failure. You just can't generalize and say that the whole bluff's unstable and is going to fail tomorrow. The geology varies. It varies quickly. It varies from lot to lot. And it varies because of the type of material, the strength of the material, the amount of water in it, the, the beach processes, wave impacts, amount of soil development, amount of vegetation. All these things make every lot a little different than the one next to it.
Can I interrupt? Is this additional rebuttal?
Is, is... This, yes. This is rebuttal to the three-tenths of a mile generalizations that were being brought up about the fighting on the bluff.
Your, your appellant took up, your, your group already took up all of the time, so...
For the rebuttal?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I guess I'm done.
But I appreciate your comment.
Or you need to decide if they can add additional...
Yeah. Do you have any other point other than, than the variability of lot to lot? That pretty much says it.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I, I read the section, the ORS section that allows for a continuance or to hold the record open. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? If, if I'm, if you may?
Speak to the basis of appeal on the director's decision and the evidence being that how the decision does not comply with the Title 17, 1747-020B.
Right. And it's a good point. Because before you go and hire a geotech to provide additional information that may or may not contradict the report that's established, that isn't what this decision of this body is about right now. The question, the question before us is whether or not the planning director made a correct decision based on Title 17.
Title 17.
Which simply defines that a geotechnical report that contains specific information be submitted. And the decision was that, yes, the geotechnical report was submitted that contained the applicable information. It's not her job or role to evaluate whether or not that information is 100% accurate. Is that understood?
I just want to, this is not the time to have a discussion with people. The only question was, does someone who participated want a continuance or leave the record open? At, yes or no is all we needed. I would recommend that if our code says it is a jurisdictional defect to not specify in your notice of appeal that you, what the basis of your appeal was, I would have recommended this be summarily dismissed. But our code doesn't have that language, so we're, we're in this hearing. And at this point, we've heard from both sides. So we've now got a trigger in the statute that says, if you participated, we either have to leave the record open for seven days, which is what I always recommend, or continue it for at least seven days. You may come to the decision that this wasn't really a valid appeal because it didn't address... But you may come to that decision, but at this point, I don't, we're not going to be summarily dismissing the case. So I think the question is, does he want a continuance or to leave the record open? I think he's expressed that, not using those express terms, but I, my recommendation to you is at least leave the record open for seven days and then continue deliberations. Don't talk about it or get any ex-party information between now and when you deliberate. And then we'll deliberate on what the facts applied to the law are when you next meet. And we're aware of the 120 days, and we'll keep, keep track of it.
So we're in...
Can I ask one more question? Can you, do we close the meeting and keep the record open?
Well, if you, you can close the public hearing and leave the record open for no less than seven days. And say, basically, submit any additional information, testimony, evidence into the record at the planning department counter. Pick seven days from now and, you know, give them a time, date certain. And then we'll continue deliberations to your next meeting.
And the data should be relevant to the substantive criteria, correct?
Well, we always try to ask people to address the applicable criteria in their, whatever evidence they submit. Now, keep in mind that the, the planning director has testified about what she believes the scope of the hearing is, the applicant and appellant's, or actually, the applicant has testified as to what they believe the scope of the hearing is. But you can also, you know, talk about criterion you think apply, and, and you make, make that case. So if you're an appellant, you can make the argument that, well, actually, this section is, is violated, or that section. So I don't want to dissuade people from participating. They, they do so that the burden is on them to ascertain from the code what is required. So I don't want to give them advice here, just tell them that you may want to seek advice.
Can we close the argument and affirm that the director made the right decision at this point in time?
No, not if someone has made a request to either have a continuance or to leave the record open. You can't deliberate and make the decision now. Someone has made a request.
I'd like to go ahead and move then that we close the public hearing, leave the record open.
Second?
Four, seven days. Seven days.
It's got to be seven days. You guys have to tell us the schedule.
No more than seven days.
You want to say June 11th, June 12th at noon?
June 12th, yeah.
How about June 12th at noon?
Okay.
Just over seven days. And then your deliberations would be then continued to your next meeting, which is...
18th.
June 18th.
18th. And so I just, I ask you not to engage in any ex-party communications about this case. Don't read anything about it in the newspaper, and, because then we'll just have to disclose that at the next meeting.
Right.
Only the evidence you get that's submitted to the planning department by noon next Wednesday.
Got that, Mr. Kimbrel?
Well, you know, we didn't find out, this guy said, we found out about this, this paper, and we're going to...
Okay. The hearing...
But...
So we had about three or four years, and he made the decision about it. He nailed me up and we got a close-up...
Okay, so here...
I had adequate time to do this. So whatever, I want to go through this process, or otherwise, I don't understand why we did this. Is that I want to get a geo report on there and get a lawyer and...
So you, you have...
I can't do that in seven days. There's no...
There was a motion?
There is.
There is a motion.
Six months.
Okay, sir, I'm going to ask you to stop.
I have to do all this, exactly.
So we have a motion to close the public hearing.
It's been seconded.
And it has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm, I'm opposed to closing it. I'd like to not give them seven days, and...
You have to give them seven days.
State law requires.
We don't have that choice. They've requested it, and we have to give them the seven days. We can't make a decision on it at this point.
So did that motion include leaving the record open until noon on...
Until noon on the 12th.
Yes, the 12th. So the only additional motion would be to continue deliberations to your next regular meeting on June, whatever it was for...
Sixteen, eight...
We need a motion for that?
I would.
Okay. Can I have a motion to continue deliberations on our next meeting, which is the 18th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I don't know. Of whom?
I don't know if this is an appropriate question at this time, Lindsay, but I think it might be useful for people in the audience to, assuming the product applies for a building permit, will there be future opportunities for people to participate in this?
The building permit was the trigger that caused the decision for the geotechno, geologic hazard report. The building permit was initially submitted on March 14th. However, it was deemed incomplete. It was submitted as a complete application on April 8th. And the planning director's decision was made the following week after that.
Would that building permit require a variance to code? And if it does, then that would be another opportunity for...
There's no current request for a variance. There's still review occurring with our building official in coordination with the soils and structural engineer.
Since the hearing is closed, I guess the question and the answer should be reduced to writing and entered into the record before Wednesday noon. So it wasn't, I mean, staff can answer questions if it's about material in the record during deliberations, but providing additional evidence to you, we should put it in the record, so...
Okay. So we're done here. Thank you all.
Yes, there's a provision in the statute unless you request to reopen the record.
And it's not just the, the record is open for seven days till Wednesday noon for anyone. Okay? So anyone may submit, not just the appellant.
Just for everybody's benefit, can you tell them what we're actually deciding so it's clear to everybody's mind that we're not actually deciding anything other than whether she made the decision on the engineering's report properly, on the geotechnical report properly?
That's all we're deciding.
You're deciding, you're making a decision under the, the code, under 17, what is it, 47? Am I in the wrong section? Yeah, natural hazards. You're making a decision about the appropriateness of the director's decision under that section. So I think you need to look at that section and look at the entirety of it and make a decision. But I don't want to take anybody's characterization of what you're doing here and agree with or not.
Old business, Lindsay.
Oh, we have no old business.
All right. Under new, under new business, we have a work-study flood zone maps and amendments.
Let me take a break first.
You want to take a break? There's been a request for a five-minute break. So we're going to take five minutes. Yeah.
Was inappropriate contact ex parte stuff, if I, if I was, for instance, one of the counteners.
Can you hear me?
You're on.
Let me know if you can't hear me at any point.
All right.
Um, yeah, so today we have a work session on the flood damage prevention code update. This process originally started in 2016 when FEMA released new, new maps for Lincoln City, and they've finally gotten through that adoption process. And now we have to adopt those maps into our code. And it's also just a time to open up the code and look at what kind of improvements that we can make to our flood damage prevention code at the moment. All righty. Summary, staff has introduced amendments to chapter fifteen point one six of Lincoln City Municipal Code, including the adoption of the new flood insurance rate maps as required by the National Flood Insurance Program. It is in title fifteen sixteen, so it is not technically a land use regulation, it's in the construction and development, but we're bringing it to the planning commission to get, get your feedback and, and comments on what's proposed. And tonight is a work-study session for that proposal.
The public hearing?
There will be a public hearing scheduled for July 16th on this issue, so. So the intent of the code amendments, number one, which is mandatory, is adopt the new flood insurance rate maps. If we don't adopt these by October 18th, 2019, then people would, could theoretically lose her, we'd be suspended from the, the National Flood Insurance Program, and it would have negative implications on people's insurance. Also, goal is to make structural and language changes to strengthen the enforceability and the communication of the ordinance, to strengthen development standards in identified special flood hazard areas, and hopefully to lower insurance premiums for homeowners. So the purpose of the, of the ordinance itself, this is just taken from, from the actual ordinance in the intent statement, is to protect human life and health, minimize expenditure of public money in costly flood control projects, minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts associated with flooding in general, generally undertaken at the expense of the general public, minimize prolonged business interruptions, ensure that those who occupy the areas of special flood hazard assume responsibility for their actions, minimize damage to public facilities and utilities such as water and gas mains, electric telephone and sewer lines, and streets and bridges in areas of special flood hazard. Maintain a stable tax base by providing for sound use and development of the areas of special flood hazard so as to minimize future flood blight areas. Ensure that potential buyers are notified that a property is in the area of special flood hazard. These are just a couple of pictures from some flooding events, not major flooding events, but some flooding nonetheless back in 2011 here in Lincoln City.
Part of town, is that it?
This is down behind the inn at Lincoln City and the roadway inn. So right by Second Court, Vivian's.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of in those little channels over there. And they're just kind of show, here you get a lot of, of this nuisance-type flooding where it's, it's not catastrophic, but it's just pretty common inundation. So that's a little bit of background on the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program was started by Congress in 1968 for three reasons. Those are reduce capital, infrastructure costs, shift costs of residents, shift the cost to residents in the flood plains, and to provide insurance options. The, the federal government through the National Flood Insurance Program currently underwrites the majority of all flood insurance that's available in the United States. There are some private flood insurance companies that are starting to emerge, but it's primarily, it's through FEMA. And that's, this is the, this Flood Disaster Prevention Act of 1973 made flood insurance a mandatory condition for all federally backed mortgages in a hundred-year flood plane, which is a lot of mortgage, majority of mortgages from what I understand are federally backed in some way. And the premiums are based on developed, developed performance standards in the flood insurance rate maps. The flood insurance rate maps are, are what are released to us that we're here to adopt as well. And, you know, the main goal, yeah, that's a little bit of background there. All righty, here's another picture. This was just taken from Kylo's, from the News Guard. Just goes to show, this is technically, this is in a V-zone, which is subject to wave action. It's pretty apparent in the photo. But we do have a lot of coastal, coastal wave zones in Lincoln City, which are particularly hazardous, living here on the beach, and these kind of things can happen. If you look at Kylo's, it's a good example of, of something that has developed to some sort of flood standard with the, you know, the waves can go underneath the building. Not that they haven't had their issues, but just generally speaking, there's 737 policies in Lincoln City that pay roughly $474,515 in premiums annually. Since 1978, NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program, has paid 44 claims to Lincoln City policyholders, totaling $1,257,285 in losses. And that's from the Department of Land Conservation and Development.
How much of Lincoln City's in the hundred-year flood plain?
Um, I couldn't tell you in a...
Percentage-wise?
I wouldn't want to make a judgment, a erroneous assumption, but if we have 737 policies, you know, roughly, I think there's roughly 6,000 structures in Lincoln City. So it's maybe 10% as a really unofficial...
Yeah, just a guess.
Talking back of the napkin type of calculation. So, just a little bit about flooding trends in general. So flooding is the world's most common natural disaster. Forty-two percent of all disaster events, number of incidents are due to flooding and 28% due to storms. So if you combine the total, storms and flooding, which are the most common issues here, account for, and often, you know, they're in combination, account for about seventy-seven, 70% of the world's natural disasters. So I always think it's just kind of an interesting statistic. You know, we worry a lot about earthquakes nowadays, and we know, we've been talking a lot about tsunamis, but flooding is still, and tsunamis are a type of flooding, infrequent and extreme, but still one of the most common natural disasters. So there is a trend, there has been a trend over the past 30 years of an increased, there has been an increased trend in flooding over the past 30 years, especially in coastal areas. So the frequent, the, this is from National Oceanic, from NOAA. The frequency of high tide flooding has doubled over the past 30 years along U.S. coast, driven by sea level rises. This chart shows the average number of days per year across the tide gauge tracked by, by NOAA. So there is a general trend of, of floods getting worse and getting more common due to sea level rise, global, global changes in the climate. We're, we're seeing a bit of an increase in that. There's also been some insurance implications over the years. Generally, insurance trends are following that, and insurance has been rising quite a bit. In 2014, President Obama signed the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act, which was a law that, because flood insurance rates were rising very rapidly, this law sort of capped the rates, the increased rates to a more manageable level for homeowners. So they are still going up, but they're not going up as fast as they were. And, you know, the goal for the flood insurance program is to have people's rates reflect the real risk. And there's a lot of subsidized insurance policies over the years, and now they're increasing their premiums to get to a level where they're actually can pay for the real risk associated with developing in the flood plain. And this, yeah, this repeals and modifies certain provisions to the bigger waters, which was an effort to, to recoup some of the costs of, of having subsidized flood insurance So, next couple of slides are just a little bit of a summary. For policyholders, in non-primary residences, secondary vacation homes or rental property, 25% potential annual increase at policy renewal until premiums reach their full risk rates.
Is there any time period on that as to how many years?
Well, this was back from 2014, so I would assume that a lot of these rates have probably gotten closer to what their full risk is. I'm not really an expert on the insurance side of it, but it's just important, I think, to note that insurance trends are rising and, you know...
Got a quick question, because I noticed your statistics there, and I was just wondering, it looks like Lincoln County residents are paying enormous premiums versus the amount that they've garnered from losses in, in a long period of time. I mean, if we've only collected a million two in losses, and yet we're paying almost a half a million a year in premiums, I'd expect over the long term, our rates would go down.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of tough, and you'll see later on, there's a slide that shows, you know, with these new maps, there's actually a reduction in the number of houses in the flood zone. But, you know, the way the flooding cycle generally goes is that you, you know, the disasters that do happen are really expensive, and it may not happen, you know, everything, what we consider the special flood hazard area is what people call the hundred-year flood. So statistically speaking, there's a 1% chance of that flood happening every year, and statistically, you know, you will get one of those floods every hundred years. So if, you know, the, the flood insurance program is, we've only been a part of the NFIP since 1978. So statistically speaking, we may not have ever seen one of those hundred-year floods. You know, you see them on the news, obviously, more so in the south, Texas and Louisiana and places like that. It only really takes one really bad disaster to, to change that premium versus payout type of calculation. But again, I'm not an expert on the actual insurance side of it. I don't have a flood insurance, and I'm not sure exactly what people pay. I have heard, you know, you do get complaints from people at planning for how much they pay for flood insurance, and I know people, it's been hurting people noticeably over the years. This is just another rate, just showing different types of properties and what their, their rates are capped at. Another, so one way that FEMA offers communities discounts on their flood insurance is through the community rating system. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the community rating system, but in order to promote smart development within the flood plains and hopefully mitigate, you know, large insurance payouts, communities can get a reduction in insurance premiums for everybody in the special flood hazard areas that are paying for flood insurance or who would like to buy flood insurance based on having higher development standards. And so it's a point system, and, you know, certain activities and certain regulations in your ordinance get you a certain amount of points. And you get a certain amount of points, you're eligible for, for discounts. Zero to 499, so from 500 to 999 points, you get a 5% discount, 1,000 to 1,499, 10%, 1,500 to 1,999, you get a 15% discount. So for, for some people who are paying, you know, $20,000 a year for some oceanfront homes, especially as a secondary residence, you could actually, you could see quite a lot of discount. And for, you know, for people who, who are already having trouble affording their flood insurance and their mortgage in other areas of the city, you know, that 5, 10% could be a meaningful savings. All righty. So now it's to the flood prevention ordinance amendments. Staff is proposing a number of changes to the current flood damage prevention ordinance. This is just a little diagram of a house, of some common features like the flood bands. You know, you can see here's the flood, and the house was built above the flood. It's not meant to be meaningful, but just a little example. So, so the First Amendment, we've already talked about this, but adopting the new, the new flood insurance rates maps, we have to do this to stay within the NFIP. You know, here's a summary in Lincoln City of, of the changes that we did have in the new mapping. This was provided by FEMA, I believe, back when the 2016 preliminary maps came out. And this shows, you know, there's 33 added, 33 homes added to the flood zone.
Are these all residential, or is commercial added in here as well?
You know, I'm not 100% sure. I believe it's all buildings.
Okay.
Because commercial buildings, if you have a mortgage, I would believe would be required to have flood insurance as well. It's primary structures, you know, we don't, it's not necessarily considering someone's shed in their backyard or a detached garage, from what I understand.
If those maps are adopted in October, would the lower rates come into effect immediately for the following year?
The lower rates?
Insurance rates, 2020.
I believe so. You'd have to talk, people would have to talk with their insurance providers about that, but I would assume that if you've been removed from the flood zone, which it looks like... rates are capped at. Another, so one way that FEMA offers communities discounts on their flood insurance is through the community rating system. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the community rating system, but in order to promote smart development within the floodplains and hopefully mitigate, you know, large insurance payouts, communities can get a reduction in insurance premiums for everybody in the special flood hazard areas that are paying for flood insurance or who would like to buy flood insurance based on having higher development standards. And so it's a point system, and, you know, certain activities and certain regulations in your ordinance get you a certain amount of points. And you get a certain amount of points, you're eligible for, for discounts. Zero to 499, so from 500 to 999 points, you get a 5% discount. A thousand to 1,499, 10%, 1,500 to 1,999, you get a 15% discount. So for, for some people who are paying, you know, $20,000 a year for some oceanfront homes, especially as a secondary residence, you could actually, you could see quite a lot of discount. And for, you know, for people who, who are already having trouble affording their flood insurance and their mortgage in other areas of the city, you know, that 5%, 10% could be a meaningful savings. Alrighty. So now, as to the Flood Prevention Ordinance Amendment, staff is proposing a number of changes to the current Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. This is just a little diagram of a house, of some common features, like the floodbands. Um, you know, you can see here's the flood, and the house was built above the flood. It's not meant to be meaningful, but just a little example. So, so the First Amendment, we've already talked about this, but adopting the new, the new flood insurance rates maps, we have to do this to stay within the NFIP. You know, here's a summary in Lincoln City of, of the changes that we did have in the new mapping. This was provided by FEMA, I believe, back when the 2016 preliminary maps came out. And this shows, you know, there's 33 added, 33 homes added to the flood zone.
Are these all residential, or is commercial added in here as well?
You know, I'm not 100% sure. I believe it's all buildings.
Okay.
Because commercial buildings, if you have a mortgage, I would believe, would be required to have flood insurance as well. It's primary structures, you know, we don't, it's not necessarily considering someone's shed in their backyard or a detached garage, from what I understand.
If those maps are adopted in October, would the lower rates come into effect immediately for the following year?
The lower rates.
Insurance rates, 2020.
I believe so. You'd have to talk, people would have to talk with their insurance providers about that, but I would assume that if you've been removed from the flood zone, which it looks like about 206 structures were removed from the flood zone, uh, you would assume that, you know, they would not have to pay flood insurance, or they would get some sort of rate reduction. Um, it's kind of interesting. I mean, in some areas, the flood height has gone up, whereas some of the structures have been removed. So the changes isn't generally towards less flooding. Um, in some areas, especially along the beach, the wave height predictions have gone up. In some areas, more accuracy has, has taken even coastal homes on the beachfront out of that flood zone, based on just better modeling. Um, you know, they used to do these maps off of 20-foot contours, and now with digital technology and modeling, it's really a lot more accurate. And I think that's why they did this mapping effort, because our original flood maps came out in 2009, the ones that we're using now. So 10 years is a pretty fast cycle for FEMA to come out with new flood maps. So I believe it was, you know, for them, it was important enough with the improvement in the technology to get a more accurate understanding of what the risks are. So here's just some examples of some maps. Here's the D River Wayside, there's Kylo's, the Inn at Lincoln City. We have, I think that's the Roadway Inn, and Vivian's right there. So here's the old flood maps from 2009. You can see this is a V-zone, which means wave action. This was an AO-zone, and this was just an AE-zone. And now these are the new maps. So in this case, you know, from a square footage perspective, there has been a reduction in, in the size of the flood zone. It's definitely more accurate depiction of the borders, more accurate understanding of the topography. Most of these structures, you can see, are still in a flood zone, not quite as dramatically. But, you know, as you can see, this, the, the line with the, the green diagonal hashes is the Zone X, which is not in a flood zone. So, kind of a dramatic change here, but not necessarily a lot of implications. Here's Cutler City, which is a large area town that's pretty much all in a flood zone. Here's the previous maps from 2009. You can see here, we have, this is the AE-zone, which is a flood zone, and this is the 500 flood, year flood zone, which is not a regulatory flood zone, so you're not required to buy insurance within the yellow. And here's the new flood, the new ones. So the 500 years been mapped out, and this is just Zone X. But you can see, it's just a more accurate, you know, less smooth edges, and so more of a, of a high-resolution map. But it doesn't appear that necessarily a huge reduction in Cutler City, but more of a, more precision.
Yeah, there's little pockets.
Yeah, here, we can go back.
Weston, yeah, that's a good point. If you go back to the new map, do the little pockets where there's homes that are obviously not mapped in the flood zone say that single structure?
Um, if you can...
Yeah, sitting out there by itself.
Yeah. So is this a structure that has been redeveloped, that is now outside of the floodway, maybe elevated above?
Well, it could be something where someone did fill that area. It's hard to say. Um, you know, in some cases, the flood zone, you're really only a foot or two foot above grade. Um, so if you go to Cutler City, it depends on, you know, where, you know, within that site location, the flood elevation may be 14 feet, but the adjacent grade in some places is like 12 or 13. So, you know, you, you effectively don't necessarily, you're still in the flood zone, but it's not so dramatic. And your property next to you, if you're up a couple of feet, maybe you're mapped out of it. Um, you know, from a regulatory standpoint, if any part of the structure is in the flood zone, the whole thing is. So it's, you'd have to zoom in and really see, like, if this structure specifically is touching any of the purple. But, yeah. You know, sometimes a couple of feet of topographic change can get you in or out of the flood zone. And I don't think they have the technology or decide, or use the technology to be able to have that sort of resolution.
Because this is all topographically based. It's not based on the existing structure, right? So there could be a house that's elevated, its, its floor is elevated, it wouldn't necessarily show it out of the floodplain, it's, it's the...
Yes, yes. It's the ground elevation is really what it's concerning, not the elevation of someone's home.
Interesting.
And when we make that determination, it's a lateral determination of, are you laterally in the flood zone, are you out of the flood zone? People can, if people believe that they're out of the flood zone and that they're above that elevation, you know, they can apply to FEMA, FEMA for a letter of map amendment, which people do do. And sometimes, you know, the resolution of even the new maps isn't up to what a survey would be. So, does that answer your question?
Yep.
So number two, there's a number of amendments in the code, the proposed, the proposed code to increase clarity and enforceability of the language. The state releases a, released a new model code that has, in some places, we think better language, more specific, well-thought-out definitions, definitions that I think we were lacking, more detail in various sections of the ordinance that were, that we thought were applicable. Um, and then there's a couple of sections on accessory structures and garages that help clarify, that aren't necessarily changing rules, but really helping clarify what the rules are for applicants and for staff. Number three is flood, floodproofing requirements for non-residential buildings. The way the code is written now, you have to floodproof at the level of the BFE, which is the base flood elevation. And we have what's called a freeboard of one foot, which requires people to go one foot above that base flood elevation. It's like a backer safety. And the way our code is written, for some reason, and I think it was probably just a mistake, the commercial buildings don't have that freeboard for floodproofing requirement, just the way the language is written. So I think at a minimum, that needs to be fixed to at least add that freeboard in for So another section we added on was for violations. We've been working with Richard on, on just defining what a violation, you know, we didn't have a definition in there of what a violation is for the chapter, and what the penalties for a violation are. And it's pretty common to have violations, just like anything else. People, you know, they, they don't follow the rules, or like, in a lot of circumstances, here's an example of a building that someone's obviously elevated, and a common violation would be for people, once the city, once they get their building permit finalized, is they would come in and, and convert this area into living space. Would be a common violation that people do. And it happens a lot. Sometimes people probably do it unknowingly, sometimes people do things to get around the rules, just like any other rule. So I think it's important to have a clear definition of what a violation is, and then a clear idea of what the penalties are, what the process is for dealing with that violation. So some other...
And that's a requirement of the ordinance in order to get the points to lower insurance rates?
I don't think violations get you points on the insurance rates.
It's not a requirement of the ordinance, of the flood prevention ordinance, to have some sort of...
Well, I mean, we're still, so we sent our draft ordinance to the state, and they're going to give us feedback. And so we're, that was in their model code and was missing in our model code.
Okay.
And I don't think we get CRS points for that specifically, but it's a common issue here that we have to deal with, and it's really hard to enforce the violation when you're trying to take, you know, what a violation is from other parts of the code and apply it to that, instead of having like a really clear pathway from incident to dealing with that issue, yeah. But the majority of our these, I would say, these first four, don't necessarily add any points, they just make our, our ordinance stronger, and I think make them function better. This will add points for CRS eligibility, but yeah, I'm not 100% sure if adding violations will add any CRS points. So the one issue we can, you have, if it's really hard to enforce your ordinance, you know, with the National Flood Insurance Program, you are required to deal with violations and to deal with issues as they come up. And if you're not able to enforce those, then you can, can put yourself in a situation, or the department can put themselves in a situation where they're not enforcing something, and then they get in trouble from the National Flood Insurance Program. So another proposed amendment is to change the substantial improvement and substantial changes. This says eligible for CRS points, and it's a common issue that you have in building. And so the, the goal is to amend the definition of substantial improvement and damage to be counted cumulatively. So typically, substantial damage is usually defined as anything, any project that's over 50% of the value of the structure. And it's the same thing in planning as it is in the floodplain code. Whenever somebody invests that amount of money into the structure, they have to come up with, into conformance with current standards. So in planning, they have to underground their utilities, they have to do parking, landscaping, and other, and then a number of other things. In a floodzone situation, maybe their house was built in 1940, and there was no flood mapping then, and it's built right on grade, or, you know, with no flood prevention measures. If they invest a certain amount of property, money into the property, they would then be required to come into compliance with what the current development stand, standards are. And the goal of that is to prevent people from investing, you know, large sums of money into an area that's susceptible to a hazard without necessarily taking care of protecting that investment from that hazard. So cumulatively, this counts, so having a cumulative definition of substantial improvement would count the, the projects over a cumulative period of time. So if you, say you remodeled your kitchen, and you spent $20,000 one year, and then four years later, you spend another $80,000 on another part of the remodel, those two would be counted cumulatively towards that substantial damage determination. And what that prevents people from doing is oftentimes, people will phase their projects to get out of that. So they come in with a project at 30%, three years later, 30%, you know, three years later, 30%, and all of a sudden, they've...
Rebuilt the whole place.
Rebuilt the whole place. And they've done it in a way that prevents them from having to address those issues. Um, you know, you can choose something like a five or a 10-year cumulative rolling period. The shorter the year is, the less strict. Some places have three years, some places have 10 years. And that's, you know, the farther, some places, it's just total over time. So, you know, that would be a really strict way to go, would say, over the life of the building, would be even more strict. Another thing, it would be to change the threshold to 49%, and that's really purely to get CRS points. It doesn't really seem to have much of an impact on your determination, but it adds points for your eligibility in the community rating system. And again, it just makes it a little bit stricter in terms of, you know, preventing people from, from hitting that 48, 49, and, you know, not having to come into compliance. So here's an example of a home. You can see here, this is the base flood elevation, which is like our regulatory elevation for the base flood. You know, this is just a kind of an example from a FEMA guidebook. So they have the value of the structure, say it was $35,000, they add, they invested $25,000, that's 71%, because the total cost of the project was greater than 50%. The rehab is substantial improvement. Um, in this case, they were just doing some exterior rehabilitation and some interior renovations. And, you know, in, in doing this, they had to add flood openings, they had to raise their house above the regulatory base flood elevation. And just kind of an example of, of how it works. So substantial damage, you know, whenever you have a substantial damage, it really ends up becoming a substantial improvement, because you, you know, the cost is when you improve the damage. Um, you know, this is an example of a house in, I think it was Hurricane Sandy, and it was not built to floodzone standards, and, you know, it incurred substantial damage, and now they're in the process of raising that up and putting it on these pillars. It's a kind of an extreme example. And in some places, especially the South, you will have homes with the whole, you know, 10 or 12 feet above ground, sometimes even higher. So there's some pretty extreme ones out there, I'm sure you've seen them, and you'll have a two- or three-story house on top of like a one or, one story of, of pilings. So another proposed amendment is to increase the freeboard to two feet in all special flood hazard areas. Currently, we have a freeboard of one foot, which requires you to build your lowest floor one foot above the regulatory base flood elevation. So here's an example of, just another diagram here. Here's, this would be an example of an E-zone, and here you have your, your base flood elevation here, and you see the lowest member is here. Freeboard is this margin of safety from where the expected flood elevation is up to where your lowest floor is. And, you know, what it really ends up being is just a margin of error. So it's, it's a, you know, is the 100-year flood zone, the 100-year flood, is it bigger than what was mapped? You know, what is the future climatic conditions? Most homes last 60, 70, 80 years. Um, you know, there are a lot of homes in Lincoln City that are 80, 80 years old, and, you know, what are the, in, in, if the house is built today in 60 years, what are the flood conditions going to be like? Is, if that flood does happen, when it happens, is that, you know, what kind of extra margin of safety would, would, do you want to have for, for that home?
And it, that, that, in all special flood hazards, is that the 100-year floodplain?
Yes, that's referring to the 100-year floodplain.
So it's the 100-year floodplain and the coastal flooding?
Yeah, there's...
Zone and...
Everything that we're talking about was within the 100-year floodplain. But there are certain zones within that, like, you know, on the beach, they have what's called a V-zone, which is a wave action zone. There are some areas that are influenced for riverine situations, like Schooner Creek. There's a large flood zone down there that's from the river, not from the ocean. And so there's different designations within that, but that freeboard would, would be standard across all of them to add that extra margin of safety. So here's an example of what the freeboards are in other communities around Oregon. This is a, a house just in Lincoln City. You can see it's obviously elevated above the flood, floodwater. This isn't a major flood event, but it's just good to show, you see, this is the lowest floor here, and it sits quite a bit higher than what most people not in a flood zone would build their house to. Freeboard, Tillamook County, three foot, Newport's still one foot, Tillamook, two feet, the city of Tillamook. Troutdale recently went up to two feet, Benton County is 18 inches. So there is kind of a range. A lot of people seem to have a one foot, which is what we currently have, but it seems like other cities are moving in, in this direction, especially ones that have a history of, of flooding.
When a county has a different rating than, than the city, does it...
It doesn't supersede.
Huh?
It wouldn't supersede our rating.
It doesn't supersede it?
No. Because there, that would be, they manage any flood zones that are in the county. So, and they can develop their own regulations, basically.
Outside of the urban boundaries, in the rural?
Another proposed amendment is to balance cut and fill in the flood zone. At the moment, we don't have any prohibitions on adding fill to the flood zone, and, you know, fill is, it's, there's more of a cumulative issue with adding a lot of, of fill to the flood zone, in the main sense that it, it takes up storage capacity for your flood zone. So if everybody adds fill, or if someone does it to a whole subdivision, the net effect is either you get rid of a, it's kind of like putting a brick in your, in your bathtub.
Is it permissible in Lincoln City to add fill? Because doesn't that affect the height of your, the build, the house that you put on it?
It, yeah, adding fill would affect your, that would be counted in your height limitation.
Yeah.
It would be, yeah. It would be, yeah. So you're not allowed to fill, I think typically it's been done for views where people wanted to get over that 35-foot limit to get a better view. And so they wanted to measure from where they put the fill. But this issue is more in terms of a compensatory storage. And so the proposed ordinance would, would require that if people do need to fill or to fill to elevate their home, that from that same property, they would have to take out and cut that same amount of fill to keep the flood storage capacity of the overall flood zone intact. And that's just to prevent a cumulative issue over the years of people putting lots of fill in the flood zone and taking up that storage capacity. And also, you know, if you're next to somebody who builds a big island, you know, essentially that flood's going to get diverted to your home. So there's sort of a, there's definitely a no adverse impact component to that. And, but this, I think this is a good diagram just to show, you can see someone adding in here, and then our requirement would be that they have to take that equal amount out of there. Because there may be some, some circumstances where people may want to fill, but the main goal is to make sure that they don't make the flooding worse for other people based on that decision. And this is also, this is also worth a lot of CRS community rating system points for in lower insurance rates as well. Both the freeboard, yeah, the substantial damage, freeboard, having a balanced cut and fill is worth a reasonable amount of CRS points as well. And the way the CRS points are, they're generally given for beneficial activities. It's not, you know, like, you just want them to have them. But there is a legitimate reason why they, they do give those points is because there's, you're reducing the risk in the community. Another one is just prohibiting enclosures over 300 square foot on elevated buildings in VE zones. This is another example of a home that's in a velocity zone. And it's, it's typical for people to want to enclose a portion of it, say to have as a garage. And we would already require them to have breakaway walls. You know, there are a, a number of performance modifications on the types of enclosures that you can have. But this would limit that to 300 square feet. When you go above 300 square feet, there's a huge insurance premium increase resulting in that. And, you know, that's because what, people are required to put these breakaway walls. And so if there are waves that come in, the walls will detach from the building, but they just end up becoming debris. They either bash into that building, into the building next to it. It just becomes like a floating wall, you know, in your, in your flood hazard area. This is also eligible for community rating system points as well. And just, you know, to prevent people from increasing the hazard. So if the physi, there's just a summary of the physical map changes, we had this up earlier. This is for the whole county, but you can see Lincoln City. You know, in general, we did have a negative change. So it's not a bad, it's definitely a good thing for people who are maybe paying flood insurance policies before that are no longer required to. So there is about a 23% decrease in the amount of structures that were deemed in the flood So cumulative effects of the ordinance changes, you know, the main, the main goal in all of this is to create a more resilient community and a more resilient floodplain. And to, you know, back to the, the beginning of the slideshow, the purpose is to keep people safe from flooding and to keep the costs associated with flood incidences to a minimum. And this is a, I like this diagram, just kind of shows all the inputs, you know, you have your disaster preparedness likelihood, your many hazards, and your development choices. And, you know, the goal is to break that, even though we haven't necessarily had a visual reminder of the disaster rebuild cycle, a lot of places are seeing that in the U.S. And the goal is to not be in this high vulnerability, increased risk, disaster, loss of assets, poverty, high vulnerability circle. The goal is to have resilient building, reduced risk, disaster avoidance, and increased well-being, and to break that sort of disaster rebuild cycle, whatever timeframe that does exist in. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weston.
All right, that was a little bit long.
No.
Any questions?
So what you added in our packet, in addition to your analysis and the presentation, is this chapter 15, point 16, is our existing flood damage prevention with your suggested changes, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I assume everybody here on the commission read through this?
Deligently.
All right. Does anybody have any comments on the changes, suggested changes?
I think they're great changes. I think it moves us a little forward in the community. I mean, we see the people, the federal government, working on all these flood maps and putting a lot of effort and resources into it. It's good to see our community following.
Yeah, I like the addition of the definitions. I think it really kind of clarifies, you know, what substantial improvement means, for example, you know? And I'm, I'm interested to see how the, the violation section pans out.
It won't be that interesting, it's just practical, I think.
Okay.
Got to quit. When I, I saw the movement from 50 to 49 because it gave us some good points and stuff, but if we moved it down from 50 to 40, we would
You do get more points the farther you move it down. And that's just a judgment call of how strict you want to be. You can, you know, there's kind of two ways to do it, is you can move that cumulative range to three, you know, you could have a shorter cumulative range and, and incentivize people to, to come in and compliance that way, or you could move that
Number.
The number. So both of them kind of accomplish similar goals.
Yeah, I, I noticed we just moved from 49 to, or 50 to 49, and I was thinking, well, you know, maybe when we're doing this, we go 50 to 40
Yeah.
Along with the range.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, I, you know.
Put a little pressure on people to upgrade their stuff before we have an issue.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, that decision would also reflect of like, what kind of cumulative time range do you want to have? Do you want to do it at five years? Do you want to do 10 years?
Is it 49% of assessed value?
It is typically assessed value, yeah. That's our standard practice.
Not market value, assessed value?
Yeah, we would say that the assessed value is a market value in this determination.
As, as you're, all, the majority of you may be aware, when you purchase your homeowner's insurance, it's typically at the cost of rebuild, which is generally what the same goal is for the county assessor, to determine assessed value for that. So the city's municipal code utilizes the most recent assessment for determining both those planning issues such as when, when undergrounding is required and other things not related to floods, but also in the flood zone.
So if I wanted to remodel my house, I would look at the, my insurance assessed value?
Lincoln County Assessor.
Or the Lincoln County tax
Tax.
Tax assessment
Tax assessment.
Of structure.
Yeah, taxes
And that is based upon the structure, not the land, correct?
Correct, yeah, all those
It's separated out, I think.
And they separate it out at the assessor, but all of those, it's, it's about the structure, not the land. The land is not part of that substantial improvement calculation. But it's the most fair, unbiased, conservative
Yeah.
Stable way to judge the value is by the assessor.
If you've owned your property for 40 or 50 years or so, isn't your tax value a lot less than your market value?
I couldn't answer that. I'm not sure about that. I'm sure it depends.
It really depends on the market. But yes, typically your assessed value for your structure would be less than what you could sell that for today.
It generally is. It's a conservative estimate. So they don't have to, you know, they don't want to have to reassess every market, you know, reassess the home every year necessarily to, if the market goes up, goes down. It's meant to be a more stable number, but not necessarily. It's usually a little bit lower.
And for the, for the public hearing, we could present a, in the PowerPoint, an example of the impacts for that. If, if you had a home, and we'll, we'll just pull somebody's and redact who's it is and, and give some examples of what, how much improvement. If you wanted to redo your kitchen and it was over that 49% proposal, what else would you have to do to the whole home?
And maybe some examples too, in terms of how these changes are going to reduce your insurance
Mm-hmm. Well
Home of this volume.
And I forgot to mention this, I think, just, just looking off of FEMA's documents and doing sort of a back-of-the-napkin type of calculation, what's in these, or this, these proposed amendments are, is roughly 300 to 500 points, which would maybe be possible to bring it into that 5% reduction, just with the amendments that are proposed.
That you're proposing.
Yeah, in our ordinance itself, we already have some other higher standards that would get us points. And I would say just the ordinance alone with these changes would definitely, well, I don't want to say definitely because FEMA grades it all, and they don't do anything, they always, it's always complicated, you know, how they come up to their decision. I would assume that we would get into that 5% rating alone, just off our ordinance. So if you take that 40, you know, $450,000 a year in premiums that we pay as a community, you know, just that alone could be, you know, roughly $20,000 to, or something for, for savings and for Lincoln City residents.
And regardless of whether we approve these changes to the ordinance, we still have to approve the, the new floodplain maps.
That we have to do, yeah.
We don't have a choice with that, right?
It's just a good time to, to look at everything, I think, yeah.
To do this at the same time, yeah.
Weston, just a clarifying question. If I owned a home in a floodplain and made some remodels that didn't meet the threshold, say that the ordinance gets adopted with the five years, and then I maybe sell this home to you, and you want to do some remodels, and within the last five years, I remodeled up to 45%, and you just want to add a deck, but it's where, it triggers that 50, does the five, does the five years threshold follow the land and the structure?
That's something, I believe it's the owner.
Okay, so we'll need to make sure that's clarified in the ordinance.
At the moment, it's just per application, so we don't necessarily need to look at the, the ownership in the past, but that's a good point to make sure we look at that as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Are there any homeowners in Lincoln County with the new maps are now in a floodplain zone when they hadn't been with the old maps?
Um, yeah, I believe so. Let's see.
Yeah, there's some added.
Yeah.
There was a few added.
33 or something added.
33 people added.
Structures.
Well, it's hard
33 structures added.
Is the la, are the last two columns, I can't read them from here, but are the, the two columns on the right, are those added S, is that single-family residence? It looks like they're separated. Added SFR, is that single-family residence? So 18 added and 147 removed.
So the remaining 15 that make the 33 would be commercial or retail?
But overall, we're looking at community benefit.
Yeah, that's the goal, yeah. And, you know, when you have the standards, like the increased development standards, having them build a foot higher, the goal is really, I had a statement about this, I forgot to read, but, you know, the goal, most of these, if you look at the insurance tables, a lot of these are meant to have that minimum increase with the maximum benefit. So if you go up to two feet, you save something like 40% on your insurance going one more foot. And if you amortize it over the cost of the building, it's really, you're actually saving money in the long term. When you have the forms there pouring the concrete going up one extra foot, often you recoup that. From the trainings that I've been to in FEMA, they'll, you know, they'll save roughly five years. You'll recoup the cost of the extra concrete in your flood insurance discounts. But it's, you know, even if you have higher development standards for someone building a house today, and, you know, if we do pursue this, the community rating system, which I know Ken Murphy's also really interested in doing as well, then you would get that discount for everybody in the flood zone. So it's really, it is about a net community benefit, ultimately at a slight increase in development standards.
Right.
Which often, from what I've seen, makes sense in the long term for the homeowner Just in, you know, most of these also carry like having increased freeboard, you know, the enclosure is under 300 feet. A lot of these performance standards would, would save the individual homeowner who's building that home insurance premiums. And hopefully, you know, would at least recoup that money over the long. If you have flood insurance for 100 ye, you know, for 80 years or something for the life of the building, you know, I would assume that a lot of these costs would be recouped.
Quickly, yeah.
Thank you. So the schedule for this, we've sent it to DLCD for initial review. We will be formally sending the draft ordinance in its current state to the DLCD for review on July, that'll be next Tuesday.
11th.
And, yeah, June 11th. And then the public hearing is scheduled for July, July 16th, Planning Commission. That will be a busy night. We do have a few other public hearings that's going out on that notice.
Other light one.
So, again, as, as Weston identified, this typically wouldn't be something that the Planning Commission would review, as it's not under Title 17, but my directors, my direction to Weston as we went through this update is because of the value to the community, we're really hoping to get some public input and information on should the city pursue a CRS system? Is, is, are we pursuing it at the right levels and really that threshold? The thing that we can't necessarily change, well, the thing we cannot change at all is the firm maps and whether someone is or is not in a flood zone at this point. There was an opportunity for property owners to challenge those decisions back in the mapping occurred in, I believe, 2017.
Yeah, so that, the appeal process for the maps themselves is done, yeah, that, that ship has sailed.
So we're going to have the public hearing, is there a decision that the Planning Commission will be making on this?
The Planning Commission would make a recommendation to city council on, on what you bu, you believe as the recommending bodies, the final ordinance should contain.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from Weston? Thank you. It was a nice presentation.
Thank you. Sorry it was a little long.
That's okay. It's one of those nights.
It's an ecological evening.
Planning Commission training.
Sorry. Didn't bring my agenda. Good thing I have a great senior planner. No one signed up for the training opportunity that is scheduled for June 14th with the group, so there will, nobody's going to training for that.
We're not signing anyone. It's too bad.
And then that is all I have for Planning Commission training at this point in time. I will be looking at seeing if we can get that agency to come out here and coordinate with perhaps Lincoln County as well as the city of Newport and do a large group.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Okay.
Just a comment on that. I took the training when I first started and it's really great. The teachers are good, and it was really, I thought it was really valuable.
Yes.
If anybody has the opportunity.
Steve and I went.
Yeah.
And it, it was very valuable.
Miles was there.
Appreciated it. That's right, Miles was there too. So it is a good one, if we could get that. Reports and co, yeah, Gary. Reports and comments, doc permitting and standards?
Yeah, so I'm going to give that to Ann Marie.
Okay.
Okay, we have, as you may or might not know, the, the doc permitting was done under the jurisdiction of Lincoln County. And we, as the city agreed, what was it?
Just last summer.
Just last summer, that we would take that over. However, we don't have a process for that. So we are going to put that into process, very simple. The properties that are zoned around the lake, the residential zones, the RM, and I believe there's some are I believe there's some R, R maybe. What we're proposing to do is just simply add docks to the conditional uses in those zones for those properties and then they would apply for that conditional use and that would come to you, the Planning Commission, for that decision using the criteria for the conditional use as well as, uh, the state guidelines for docks from, uh, Oregon Department Fish and Wildlife. And that's basically it. Yes, Miles?
Just use their standards.
Yeah, and we will, we'll put those into the, right now, we have some standards in the marine waterway zone. Uh, we don't completely encompass all of the guidelines from the state, so I reviewed those and there's, there's a few that, and I, I printed them out if I can, I can hand them out to you if you'd like, but, um, so I just prepared a, you can hand those.
These are two separate items.
So, so basically, somebody, if they wanted to build a dock on their property, they would come in and get a conditional use permit for that?
Correct.
And then there would be some sort of standards for building that dock that they would have to follow and then some, I assume, um, somebody would go out and-
Correct.
Check it, make sure that they did it.
Yes.
And then there's some maintenance associated with those docks?
And there is maintenance included in the standards.
Okay.
So ODF and W has, has some of that in their standards and I simply added that language to our marine waterway zones under, um, docks and you can see that in. So I prepared a, just a, a draft ordinance, which is basically the marine waterway zone adding the ODF and W standards.
Okay.
And then you also have the ODF and W standards, so you can-
So length of docks is somehow ratio of waterfront or?
Yes, it's all on, the length, um, the length and the length of dock and how far it exceeds into the waterfront is already in our, our dock standards in the marine waterway zone. So, and I know Miles is anxious to ask a question.
Twenty, uh, almost 30 years ago, I bought a property on Devil's Lake that had a brand new dock. And for four or five years I used it and then I got a letter from the state of Oregon, the Department of, uh, the, the motor, uh, not the motor vehicle department, but the uh-
Marine Water-
State Marine Board, that they were implementing a license fee and for the first time it was $25 and that was lasted for five years and it was, uh, no requirements other than you had to measure the dock and send them a, a thing. Are there going to be size requirements on the, the city ordinances and does that duplicate or replace the, uh, fee that, uh, I paid every five years and it was finally $150 for-
The, the only fee we would have would be the application for the conditional use permit for this, the licensing that is required by the state to show that you're compliant with your dock would be part of the state process.
So there'd be-
I do, I, I believe I'm still getting certifications that need to be signed by me that, you know, the dock was built under the standards of the, the county at the time and that it is compliant and, and so on and so forth, so.
I don't know if it was built, uh, under compliance of the, uh, the county.
At, at that point in time, there, there probably was not requirements for compliance.
Okay.
So my question, I guess boils down to, if you're not going to have standards for the length of the dock or the width of it or the size of it, basically, why is, do we have to go through a licensing project?
We, we will have requirements for setbacks. Yeah, so there's going to be clear requirements for setbacks. There's also some concerns about overwater construction and making sure that you can have some light filtering features for that so that it's protecting the natural habitat of the waterway.
Okay.
For, for instance, and I'll just, because I don't want to read all of them, but just a couple of them, that total area of the dock on the water must not exceed 144 square feet with the width not exceeding six feet and a length not exceeding 24 feet. So that's one of the-
Room out there.
Correct. And, and then there's also one about, uh, the type of material, so treated wood is not allowed. And where is the, the light one? Grated surf, oh, grated surfaces on the docks must not be used for storage or other purposes that will reduce natural light penetration through the dock. So it's those, and there's about 10 of them.
There are a lot of boathouses that have been converted to additional rooms or sitting rooms on the, the lake, I know.
Is that a formal code enforcement complaint?
I would think that that would be-
We have a couple other questions, so I do want to honor that, but we are aware of those issues right now.
Is there a reason we're making this conditional rather than an administrative decision?
Yes, because I believe that any overwater structure deserves to be gone forward with a public process.
Okay.
It is, that was my direction to staff.
Okay. Any other questions about the docks? Okay, moving on.
Okay.
Um, I actually, I failed to amend the agenda again at the very beginning of the meeting.
You lose.
Um, Steve could speak to this, as, uh, he was in attendance yesterday, but we do have draft standards that will be going live this week for our design regulations. These are available on our city website already, um, under the design, um, review, project update on the city's planning page. Once we complete the survey to go out to the community, you will see it under our news, I believe it's news and events on our main page.
Current news.
Current news section as well. So we have updated, uh, language for chapter 1774 as well as 1720. In addition to, the prod, the project website also has a PowerPoint that presents that. Um, this will be just public hearing, public, or I'm sorry, public comment at this point in time. We will prepare, uh, for some work studies with the Planning Commission after we wrap up the final public comment phase before going to a public hear-
So these are proposed design review standards that are live on the website?
They just, yeah, so they went up yesterday, um-
For public comment via the website.
We're going to start the public outreach process, correct, but the, the Planning Commission process is still, you know, three, three or four months down the road. We're, I'm still working in-house for making sure we have the public, public comments and have these perfected before we send DLCD notice.
Okay.
Um, and I believe that's it for reports.
Okay, so future agenda items in next meetings.
And so as you're aware, we will deliberate on the, um, appeal that was heard tonight on June 18th. Um, we also have, oh, I forgot my list.
I have the list.
Oh, thank you.
In front of me. It's still, yeah, we were going to have a work study on June 18th for the villages land use map amendment and the signs and dine, design review standards.
Correct.
All of that on the 18th?
That is scheduled. We will be having a very busy summer with the wrap-up of a lot of things. I have had to make the, um, professional decision to temporarily bump back the kickoff of the comprehensive plan so that we can get some of these other mandated code requirements out of the way and truly give us time to, to lift our sleeves and, and get our elbows dirty on that.
Okay, so villages, the sign, ordinance and the appeal.
And the villages will be a land use designation. Um, you will, it will not be, uh, the hearing on a, a master plan update, but we'll be looking at establishing a land use designation for that area.
Okay.
And signs hopefully won't be as daunting as it sounds. I'll have some specific talking points. I've been going out to the businesses, so I have some, like I just said, not to be redundant, but I have some specific, um, issues, items that I would, that I'm hopeful that Planning Commission will be able to give some really good feedback on. So it's not a matter of going through the entire ordinance, um, per se, but-
Thank you.
-just focusing on specifics.
Kind of the, the main, the main points we need to focus on, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? No. Everybody's shaking their heads. Everybody's packed up. I guess we're done.
Yeah. They're like, okay, we're done. Not me.
Either. All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
What did I do here? Why is it talking to me?
Why is-
Everybody wants-